Which would help hopefully with some of the road issues. Those roads are tight. So you're definitely, I completely agree.
We agree with him.
Well, one option might be that maybe the workers, we can have, talk to somebody in Memphis about it, and have the workers drop off their equipment or tools and then park their vehicles on Pratt Road in front of the Lions Field.
Yeah, park at the Lions.
There's more room there. They can walk over. It's not that far. They're young guys. They can...
And they did for the water.
That'd be safer.
They have to be up Sunday. Little league on Saturday too though. Because the parents should be able to go there and watch their kids. And I don't have any kids playing. I'm just sticking up for the community.
Yep. Well, at least we're getting them out. Bell River is gonna look like a place.
Regards to that.
Can I ask, where's the road going in for the condos?
Ask me.
I remember my last time.
I have the site plan. I'm gonna bring it up.
Sure, yeah.
If you give me one moment, I actually have the site plan. Just gotta remember where I put it.
Should be in the last meeting.
Um, we had last meeting.
Is it in the last meeting?
Should be, because that's when we did all the offsets and everything.
I believe it was the last meeting.
Is it this one?
I brought it out.
There they are. This is the site plan. Oops, sorry.
What, that one? That one looks good.
Is that the one that we want?
Yeah, that's the road coming in.
Okay. Does it show?
It doesn't show Bell River on that one, I don't believe.
It might be this one.
The top is Bell River.
Can't zoom it up.
And your house is right to the left.
Yes.
Yep.
Sorry, I'm blind as a bat, so...
I'm gonna collect the toll.
So this is the lead-in right here, right?
Yeah, if you can scroll down there. Right there.
Is that good to us?
Yeah. So the entrance will be on Bell River Road.
Correct.
So question...
There's traffic in, traffic out, one entrance in and out.
So the question on that road, is that gonna be a private road or are they gonna annex that over to the city?
It's a private road.
It's a private road.
It'll be a private road.
I believe it's gonna be an HOA.
So we'll never have to worry about a property tax on that?
No, it's all being maintained by the HOA.
They own it all, and the sidewalks, city infrastructure, the sewers and so forth, the gas lines and all, that's a different story.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure they weren't gonna annex that over to the city and then now we become a corner lot and we're responsible for that section of the road.
They can't annex to us if anything, we wouldn't annex it.
Okay.
Okay. Now, are those, are they putting drainage ditches on both sides of that road? Or what is that exactly? I'm trying to...
There's existing drainage.
No, no, I mean on the side of the road they're putting in. There is not existing drainage area.
Oh, you're talking about...
I know, 'cause I cut their lawn there every week and...
That's another thing. They don't cut their lawn.
That's another thing. How come they don't cut, how come they're not being forced to cut their lawn? I mean, that entire field there, they have not cut since they bought it. And the other field behind them on Bell River, they have not cut since they bought it.
He's cutting.
And it's ridiculous. I mean, I'm sure now the condo side ain't gonna be an issue, 'cause they're gonna start building there. But the other one should be an issue too.
You're saying where the road goes in?
Well, I've been cutting, I've been cutting all the way along our property line on that side. Because I can't stand it there and kids wanna go back and forth and... You know, and there's mice that come from it and... You know, if I let my lawn get that big, I'd be getting tickets. So...
Something we need to address with tools about maintaining... Maintenance area during construction.
Well, we can definitely address it with our light officer too.
And I don't know what the safety thing is, but I think leading to not blocking in or fencing in, and there's only one hole left, but the big hole over there, some kids gonna fall in there and get hurt.
Which hole?
The big, so if you go right across the street from me, there's a family, and they, yeah, they should be watching their little boy. They do. I'm not saying they're bad parents at all.
So there's an open, there's an open...
Like, there's a basement.
Basement, something.
There's a basement and it's not...
No, it's not fenced in. No.
They haven't fenced any of them off.
That's dangerous.
Yeah, that's actually, that's actually, I believe that that's against code, but it's also a safety violation.
Right now, I mean, you go right there, now, right now it has the wall that high, but it's still not fenced to go in.
It's actually more dangerous today because the problem you're gonna have with a little kid is they're gonna fall in that hole.
Looking.
They're going to hit their head against the concrete foundation and fall into a trench that's probably about three feet wide and drown because there's a foot, foot and a half of water sitting in the bottom of it.
It's a huge danger.
That whole section that's fenced once in a row to keep the kids out of it.
The newest one isn't even having to...
No.
It doesn't even have the... Whatever.
I mean, I see that they at least put a wood plank across the window, so if a kid went in there and was looking out, you know, they could...
Right, but it still should be, there still should be, I mean, leaving that orange fence in.
Something. It's dangerous.
Something to stop them from walking, 'cause in the middle of the night, I mean, even as an adult, you're walking in.
Yeah.
Totally understandable.
I mean, not only that, but deer, anything. I mean, it's just cruel, it's cruel and dangerous.
It's definitely unsafe.
Okay, let's reel this in a little bit here and give a little more structure. So the next couple to speak, you two over here on the end.
What you got? Everybody asked pretty much what order everybody covered the issues.
When is it starting?
A minute ago, which, you're talking about changing at this meeting. The height restriction, the setbacks.
In regard, okay.
So we covered all topics, everybody that came in, we're good.
Yeah, no, we got off track for a few years, but we just...
Jerry, do you have any else you want?
I'd just like to make sure we got it.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm not that many of them.
Yeah, Jerry would still like to speak when we're done.
Okay. Go ahead.
About condominiums?
Yes.
It's too dense to start with. It's way too dense for, A, this community, and B, for the land that they have. That, that 64 needs to be 24, 30. There's no recreational area for assuming some kids that are there. They should have another exit out onto Pratt Road, but I think that public ship is sailed. And then there's a lot of the same things of the... The construction is not well organized. You know, there's gonna be a traffic problem, especially, you know, well, for where we live and where two lives, this is... This is gonna become a nightmare, especially with 64.
You figure with 64, that's more than 10% of the houses in the entire city of Memphis.
It's a 16% increase to our population.
Just the condos.
Just the condos.
Yeah. All in nine acres.
In one driveway.
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half acre. That's a building for every two acres.
One way in, one way out.
One way in, one way out.
If they didn't wanna do it that way, they gotta cut this by two-thirds. At least in the half.
But these plans have already been approved.
I wonder why the setbacks been changed?
'Cause the setbacks didn't allow it.
What's that?
The last meeting I was at, they said the setbacks wouldn't allow all 16 buildings, the current setbacks.
That's what we're addressing tonight is the changes.
Oh.
Correct.
This doesn't constitute a public hearing on the setbacks. This is a public hearing on the condominium project. I think we're gonna have to have a separate public hearing specifically for the setbacks. And all proposed zoning changes.
I was just going, the last meeting I was at about this, they said that they can only fit 10 in with the current setbacks that are in place. That to get 16, they have to change the setback, 'cause the road, the amount of distance from the condo to the road was not enough to fit all 16 buildings in.
You're correct, except for it's not the public road.
It's their private road.
So you're right, but then at the same time, that setback is based upon where you consider the right-of-way to end and not end. If you go from the road, it is legal. If you go from the right-of-way, we're not really sure how that works. Because the right-of-way on a private road, you know, I mean, it's a little, that was part of our discussions last, last week. We were trying to exactly, do exactly what you're saying. Where does that, where do these setbacks go from, and where do they go to, and what are they actually for? 'Cause if you go off of our main road, which is our Bell River Road, they're way away from that. So these are all their, their own condos setbacks off of their own roads. And what, where they're gonna be and how they're gonna, how they're gonna interact. They're allowed to be the distance in between them?
Not currently. As our code is written, not that, that does not conform.
On the ones that are against, 'cause the setbacks, if you go to setbacks against the property line?
Those, the rear setback is required to be 30. They're proposing 20. Our code of ordinances has a line that specifies the side setback be increased by a foot for every 10 feet over 40 feet, which brings our side setback to 17 feet or 34 feet in between each building.
Yeah, there would, there would be a difference of less than a foot over the whole structure, over the whole...
It's a, it's a, one foot for every 10 feet, so it would be an increase of seven feet, um, which puts us to 34 feet in between the buildings. And that, that's not that atypical. I looked up Richmond's code of ordinances, and for residential multiple zoning, they require 30 feet in between each building.
Well, a lot of your building setbacks are based on fire spread. If one building's on fire and it's too close to the next one, it can spread really...
Yeah, we had the code...
Maybe that one with one.
Yeah, we had the code enforcer here, and he, he said there to code, I mean, that was, I forget the gentleman's name.
The building inspector.
Building, yeah, the building inspector was here. So we did, we did have that, 'cause that was part of our questions too, is it, does it meet fire code?
I would point out that there's a, there is a difference, you know, 'cause the subject we've been into pretty heavily over the last several months. Subdivisions, fragmented subdivisions are a different animal in condominiums. We're talking surrogate lot lines, so it was a kind of curveball to make us really understand how they work. We had an honest disagreement about, within our body, about what these things mean. But in my own, I'm just giving my own opinion, and hey, I'm in the boat with all of you. I live at the stop sign of Bell River, so, you know, I'm not missing a thing out there with the noise and everything else, and I've been here 20 years, so, you know, I'm trying to be disinterested with the issue and just look at it from a, from a, just a fair perspective. All the reading I did, when I looked at the condo, the building codes for the state of Michigan, they're either meeting or exceeding as far as wits go, the way that I read. I am not a lawyer here, I'm not gonna make claims today. But, you know, we had a, a discussion on this last meeting with the planning commission. We sent the recommendations to city council. That currently, we took no action on it in city council, because they wanted to get the feedback from this meeting first. So, right now, it is in the hands of the city council with these variations and all these questions that have been brought up and thoroughly discussed. We don't have to go through them all again tonight, but I'll tell you as much as I know. And we'll have action on that at the next city council meeting. But it's great you're bringing them up. I'm making notes. I will talk to the builder. I am kind of the liaison with him, Mark Skiva's gentleman's name. He's been pretty responsive to me, all the various things you talked about, you know, the radio, the loud in the morning, fencing, grades. So I will make sure that I personally give him the heads up on all these concerns that I've heard here tonight. And, you know, hopefully they will be considerate and try to ameliorate them somehow. 'Cause, yeah, I know, I do it in the morning, I'm here, and I'm here, and nail comes gone for the last, since it wouldn't use roofs on it. It drives me crazy. I like my quiet house, believe me, you know.
Well, it's understandable, is what I'm saying, but, like I said, seven days, and then the houses are palo, so everything, and the music, it's like, wait a minute, I just went outside just to sit and drink my coffee. I don't, you know, you just...
I'm with it.
Would appreciate a little bit of respect. Like I said, it's just kind of been pulling on our hair and trying to be patient, 'cause I talked to a buyer even about the water thing, you know, so...
And I'm gonna suggest that to Mark. That's all I can do. I have noise ordinance is what it is.
And they have their first party again, right? There's different forms of request. So, I know that, like, the houses that went over here, everything seemed to be pretty good. So now we get this, which I thought this was supposed to be the third phase. I thought the condos were supposed to be the second phase.
They are.
So now we've got these houses going in there, and you've got different contractors and workers coming in doing different things, that's fine. But they just, they just need to understand that we like to be able to enjoy ourselves a little bit through the summer. And if you can't work through the winter, that's whatever, you know, but...
We won't break that.
We'll adjust to it, but it's just, it's just, to me, very disrespectful. You're not, you're not on a construction site out in the middle of wherever, building a big building. So that's just, it's just annoying. We, we gotta be able to enjoy life, you know. We're getting older, and like he said, we moved out there for that shit. They gotta understand. And I appreciate you listening and taking concern.
I do.
Yes, right.
Yeah, and that's what we have you in here for, right?
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely, you know.
I will say, I took the liberty of reaching out to the lawyer about Rule 125.1944, which was the rule, we couldn't decide whether or not condominiums were allowed to be closer than, or not allowed to be forced to be farther than 10 feet away from the property line border. And it was his opinion that that specific rule set is not applicable to site condominiums, but is applicable to mobile home condominiums. Everything I've read says that condominium should apply, or should comply with your ordinances, which, if we're having to change, if we're having to make six recommendations to make this project comply, I think the problems with their, is with their project, not, not our ordinances. This, it was said, this is a lot of density. And if we just make them comply with our ordinances, I think they can fit about 40 units still. I mean, if you take into account the, the big retention pond and any sort of right-of-ways, whether they're 60 feet like our code says, or the proposed 45 in this drawing, we're talking about a buildable lot area of maybe six acres. I live on .8 acres, like 300 feet to the north of this. I can tear down my 800 square foot home and build two of their 125-foot long buildings. We're talking about, we're talking about my 800 square foot home getting replaced with 10 units of, an average of what? 1300 square foot a unit? It's, these are not mid-rise apartment-style condominiums. These are massive homes circumventing our zoning.
Does anyone else in this room feel like they've pushed an inch, like, they push an inch, they push an inch, now they want four miles? I'm just gonna throw it out there.
This is the plan that they submitted. This is the plan that planning commission approved.
We, we have yet to approve this. We have not approved this.
I didn't think it was approved, yeah.
I think we can approve the structural.
We, we, we approved the conceptual plan, which said at that, at that particular point, we had no more questions. This is the preliminary review, in which we tell them, okay, your general layout is okay, at which point they must submit another round of drawings to us with more, more detail showing...
And they were submitted, and they were approved through the planning commission and the city council. Current old plans are now in the office, so just to put the fact out there, those were some of the plans we're calling. We looked at them and the city council did.
There is no record of those being approved. I've written every, every meeting minute that we've had, that, that we have taken no vote on approving that.
All right, why don't we hold those until later in the meeting, we'll discuss that instead of... We need to move to move on.
So that's a pretty, that's a pretty valid thing we need to figure out if we're approved or not.
Yes.
Is that gonna be a closed meeting, so no public can get in? I don't think we've ever had a closed meeting. Yeah, not that I'm aware of. All our meetings are... All right, okay, now, like, then, since everybody's talking fast.
One thing I wanna point out, everybody, this is a planning commission, and I don't, as far as I know, I don't think we approve or disapprove anything. We make recommendations, and recommendations go to the city council, and the city council does the approvals. So, this planning commission doesn't have the authority to approve or disapprove.
We do have the authority to approve the conceptual plan. We do not need to send that to city council.
Thank you for clarifying that, John. I missed hope when I said we approve, we recommend. And the city council can either accept it, reject it, or modify it.
Right.
And you're wholly an advisory body, and to give a platform for public to come in, weigh in, and do those types of things that we're willing to do.
But we did approve the conceptual design. That, we, that happened...
The, the first one, yeah, in December.
Yeah, that happened months ago.
That, that one, we said, yeah, we have no more questions. You may proceed.
Yes.
So there's your conceptual plans, right there, and now, my thought is if we picked this apart and tell them that they can only put 40 units in there, they're probably gonna just back out.
Bye.
I mean, if adhering to our laws kills a project, it wasn't meant for our city.
You're absolutely right.
I, I don't... Like, like I said, I mean, just looking at Richmond's, they've got a rear setback of 40 feet, a front setback of 25, 30 feet in between the buildings. Armada has a rear setback of 30 feet. Romeo has a setback of 40 feet, like, I don't know why we have to change this to 20.
We're only required to move up 10, Ken. And we have disagreement, I understand, with whoever, you know, they gotta have a minimum 10. This is what I was told, is passing information on, the builder said they make it 20, 'cause it's easy to maintain a home. And so they actually did more, and a little bit overdoing this as far as looking at the orientation of the back line.
So the builder said it has to be no more than 10 feet?
You know, the law, you have the building codes, you know, the Michigan building codes.
I, I asked our lawyer.
Yeah, well, you know, get three lawyers in the room, you get three different opinions too. There's, they're not, uh...
But isn't he our lawyer?
He's our lawyer.
Thank you.
Well, what did you, what did you say, did you say, "Ask the lawyer"?
Huh?
Or you, or you just thought, or what?
Do you want me to, do you want me to read it?
Well, yeah, it'd be nice if you shared those things with us, you know, in writing. I usually make courage to the past.
I, you want them to swim more this morning? Sorry, I didn't...
I just got these morning, I'll tell you what, brought it up.
Can I share another concern?
Absolutely.
And we have provisions to prevent these from going rental properties. Because one of the very things people do nowadays is buy condominiums and rent them out.
Yeah, we discussed that in the original public hearing we had, when they were proposing the building on this land. We had that at the Lions Club.
Yeah, I remember that, but I mean, do we have some ordinance that's very specific that that is not gonna be permitted?
I would have to look.
Jerry, I don't think so for that. I mean, we're...
Because the reason people do this is simply to circumvent ordinances.
I know what you're saying, is that some, if I was to buy one of the condos and sublet it and rent it out?
And sublet it as a rental, and we're gonna have 64 rental houses in our neighborhood? Then we'll have heated meetings.
In the end, we're, we're it.
No, there's a homeowners association, and I'm pretty...
As I said, it's a each your way, and two of each.
Because the city ordinance, homeowners association can change like that by the homeowners association.
The homeowners association can sell out every one of those condos to low-income housing.
Yeah.
So let's be honest, it's in our backyard. No way. There needs to be an ordinance written before they even build a condo.
So you're also planning on raising...
Yeah. It's gonna be letting, I don't wanna say it, lowlifes in.
Well, we're gonna be privately owned.
Yeah, I mean...
Privately owned, that'll keep their estate. I don't really see the advantage of... You know, where they're gonna get a block of people, where they're gonna say, "Let's all get together and sell our homes for Section 8 housing." They're not gonna get...
Only people that are buying our homes, and don't know what they're doing.
Well, and you said, I think these, I don't know what the price of condos are, but the price of the houses are not...
I don't think you're making much sense.
They're not affordable, so, I mean, to me, they're expensive as can be, you know, I bought my own...
No, for somebody that's an investor.
But even as an investor, you have to, you have to, you gotta have return on your investment, right? So, if I buy that, if I buy that condo and I have to pay $1,500 a month, how can I rent to somebody for less than that?
Unless you're a business and you live 40 miles from here, and they're not gonna be your neighbors. I might buy the condo and sell it out to anybody that'll rent it, and I'll still make money, and then I'll sell my house.
Yeah, I don't know how you could make money, I mean, you say lowlifes.
So you would buy a $300,000 condo and rent it out for $400 a month?
It doesn't make sense.
How many houses are in there?
Well, but you're saying that if you spend, say, $300,000 on a condo, you would have to rent it out for $2,000 a month to break even.
That's all I was saying. I'm just trying to compare some...
$2,000 is a lot of money, subsidizing your income.
There could be multiple families in one condo.
Multiple families in one condo.
I mean, again, I, we can't...
Not talking to the traffic, you can't.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how, I don't know how we can control that. I don't, I don't know the answer to that.
Well, city ordinance.
Yes.
I don't know if you can restrict, you're getting into stuff that I don't know.
You're getting, you're, yeah, you're getting...
I don't know how you can restrict, who can move into a condo.
Right.
You can restrict the owners, that you have to be owner occupied.
Owner occupied.
Again, I don't, I...
And the issue comes in the fact, it's probably not gonna be in the next couple of years. The issue is, is down the road, things get distressed, and then people look for the help, and they, they rent it out for a year or two before it gets foreclosed.
I mean, you're going down a scenario that I think is very highly unlikely.
It's very likely.
But it is a scenario, I will give you that.
It's very likely.
'Cause there are a lot of houses you can buy around here for 60, 50, 70,000. No one's buying those and renting them out.
I wish you would show me where one is, I'd like to pay cash for it.
I paid $80,000 for my house two years ago.
Now today you won't.
There's one that just sold last summer for $60,000, right down over here. I looked at it myself.
I know what you're talking about. It's not available.
Well, there are houses available out there that are still in that hundred-and-some-thousand-dollar where we live. So I find it hard to believe, and I'm just speaking from my own, I, I'm just trying to put some... I understand your concerns. I think you have some legitimate ones, but someone buying that, buying these condos and turning them around and renting them out for low income housing?
Well, do it now, or we do it in 10 or 15 years.
It's when the housing drops.
When the housing is in a bubble right now.
And then they can go buy another house somewhere else for less than what they're paying. I'll tell you the scenario. An ex-sister-in-law that did it. She, she bought a very beautiful house. She then, and it wasn't his sister, by the way, it was an ex-sister-in-law. Let me just clarify. She bought another house that was better than her house for less than what she was paying. She rented her house out and then had it foreclosed. That's what people do.
I did, but I, you're asking, they're asking the city, you're asking the city planning commission, which we're up here voluntarily.
And we're talking about...
And you're asking us to make rules and apply to stop people from moving in and renting their houses out. I, I just, I'm kinda like...
Yeah, we don't have control over that.
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to show me how we can do that, and I'll figure, I mean, I just...
How does, how does the council maintain rentals in the city of Memphis?
Well, I have to look and see what our...
I can answer that.
Oh, I'd love to hear. Thank you.
Just this last year, we enacted a, pretty thoroughly, it just recently was adopted, for the purpose of trying to make sure that we keep our rental properties up and protect landlords and tenants both. So we have a rental inspection ordinance that will be put into effect very shortly. Just gotta, we have a building inspector in, he's, he's going to administer the program. So every two years, anybody who has a rental property is gonna... So every two years, anybody who has a, a rental property is gonna have to be inspected. So the basic things that you would expect to be kept out, you know, for both sides of the contract to keep it up. And everybody will have, we gotta get everybody registered, so we gotta get that out there. And that's one of the things we'll probably talk about this next council meeting, how we're gonna go about that. Cause we gotta notify all the people in town, so that, this is gonna be a program, that ordinance is in place right now. Uh, regarding, you know, what John was saying, we can't make any rules on this, however, I'm listening because of, uh, I haven't heard it brought up before and if, if, if it does deal with crafting an ordinance. Then, you know, I will definitely bring that up to, I'm, I'm the council representative, you know, I'm, I'm a council member too, but I just, your rep here as, you know, Mr. Martin, Mr. Mayor, he sits on the council. So, you know, it's a, it's a topic I think is worthy exploring, but I'm just curious, just off the top of my head here, but would, um, Mr. Gunther saying, you know, it's gotta be owner occupied? And no subletting, basically, right?
Yeah, I just, my point is the city need, may need to be proactive here.
I know, but how, how will we practically put that? And without affecting the regular homeowners is my conundrum here, what about the person like me? Does that mean that I can't sublet my house or rent my house then?
On the lot, he says there needs to be some restrictions in the whole community on what can be rented out.
So it's, it would take some thought, that's what I'm saying, for crafting ordinance, I'm definitely open to, to hear some smart ways to go about that, but it's not gonna be a quick thing, it's something we'd have to work on.
And I think if you took the words out, if I, if I misspoke, that's what I'm concerned is, how do we do one and not the other, cause if you, if you're targeting.
Change the point, change it for all.
Yeah, if you're targeting a certain.
I go to leave my house for six months to go to another state, you wanna tell me that I can't rent out my house while I'm gone? How, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's how, it gets tricky.
How, how do you regulate it, you're saying the condominiums could do that, well, you know what, what stops anybody from the city from doing that?
Well, the concern would be the density of this, this is where it's gonna be potentially a problem.
So you would think that if there's sixty units there, that you gotta worry about six people subletting two people of lower income moving into a condominium? And that the homeowners association wouldn't really care about it, they wouldn't regulate it at all. So as a homeowners association, is it not that every homeowner in that association would have a voice and a vote? On what happens within the condominium site as a homeowner in that? So if somebody was to start let, subletting or something like that, it's like, wait a second, this is not allowed. You think that everybody's gonna say, oh, well, we'll all just jump on board and let, sublet. I think that you're looking at a very unlikely scenario. But that's just my opinion. And again, how do you regulate it, do you implement, everybody in the city of Memphis cannot let out their house while they're gone or at any point in time?
Unless they're HOA, if they, they're gonna have a homeowners association?
Yeah, they pay fees on that, if they're quite expensive.
If they crafted that into their homeowners association letters, then that would take care of that problem.
Right. HOAs don't like.
Have we even seen their HOA regulations?
What do you mean?
Have we seen their HOA regulations?
They, they won't put that together till they have them built, they're, they're, well, because they hand, they hand the organization off, they're gonna govern, you know.
Right.
Basically, cause they're gonna be collecting money from every one of those houses, right, for maintenance, for the roads, all that kind of stuff. So because it's money involved, this is my take on it, all right, now you get your local board like you have and all these neighborhoods and condominiums all over southeastern Michigan. And they're the little governing body, you know.
Homeward, homeward associations like to, they're not, they, they, they don't want, you know, riffraff in their, in their neighborhood.
No, someone that's quite minute.
They can't have.
Yeah, when they get it down, you have to put your trash can on the left-hand side of the driveway.
Exactly.
And if that's on the other side.
And you can't put more than three lawn or minutes out and your mailbox has to be painted brown.
So HOA, HOAs are very specific.
I bet you have a problem with the majority of the truth, cause people wanna keep their value up too.
Independent. Yeah, independent, you're right, cause if the HOA, you have one person that violates the HOA, it takes everybody else's property values down. So that one, once the, the condos are built, that HOA will be the governing body of that property. And I'm sure there's gonna be nobody in there spending this amount of money, what they're charging for these condos, that's gonna want somebody in there that can't maintain it.
I believe seeing the condominium bylaws is prerequisite for approving it.
That's what I thought too. At least that's what I've been told by several lawyers.
I'm gonna have to stress, memorize the sequence, but they're there somewhere, I'm sure.
I've been told by several lawyers that the bylaw should have been made prior. That they should have been produced before the first person moved into one of the houses.
I can put that on my list of questions, if you ask that from the building, right?
Well, the thing is, there are several people that are already living in that HOA that, and I don't care what they do, it's their property, they own it. But there's things that in some HOAs that wouldn't be allowed that are there and I'm not here to make them, cause I actually like them, but the thing is, is you can't set bylaws after people move in. Because they're sort of grandfathered in, the ones that already live there, how can you come and tell me, well, you can't do that, you can't do that, no, it's done.
Do they?
They put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, we gotta find that those are, then they should be made public? I'm, I'm asking myself, I'm even, yeah.
No, they should be made public, because there's people already living in the HOA.
So those people should already have a HOA agreement.
Don't you think?
Yeah, the people that sign an HOA, to be kind of blunt, if they were given a set of, of guidelines, then my legal argument, they don't have an HOA. You can't come to me after I bought one of those houses and say, well, by the way, here's what you agreed to, and it's like.
And, and I don't know, I.
I agree to a blank piece of paper, I don't agree to anything.
I know that part of the HOA.
Well, maybe, I'm thinking when reading through this, just again, off the shoot from the top of my head, when, it might be when they finish the construction of them. And then the final deeds, master deeds, there's a whole big long section at the end of this ordinance, and it might be at that point that the HOA is filed. You know, maybe, I, I didn't mean to, uh, intimidate that people had to buy them first, but I think once they, they have finished the construction there. And then, then they gotta register all these individual deeds and all the property, all that, that might be part of.
I think everyone that owns that house now should have a registered HOA agreement.
They're already in the HOA, I was told.
For the, the tax rates.
And if they, if they don't, and I was their lawyer, I'd be very worried.
I don't know, I don't, I can't ask you that.
And I don't know, are we, are we allowed to ask for it, the city council, I mean, who asks?
I'll ask Mark directly.
About you, cause I don't know, that was our next question, who do they have to report it to?
That would be the, the construction manager, that's Mark Steeler. Mike knows the other gentleman that he's.
Will we be able to get a copy of that, Detroit?
I got it on my list, I'm, I'm after it.
With you.
I can tell you, there's so many on earth that can make them abide by anything after they've moved in, already built and put things in place that they want.
We're gonna ask for a copy of it. Yeah.
Okay.
They can't take them, take them down retroactively, they just can't.
Any, any other comments? We good?
So, so, so what is gonna be done about the traffic, cause that is gonna be a lot of traffic coming down that road. I mean, that's gonna be more traffic than Bell Rivers currently has on that road, let alone on Bell River then.
In regards to people coming in and coming out on Bell River?
Yeah.
I mean, I feel bad for the, uh, the people that own the house right across the road, cause every morning, you're gonna have seventy, eighty, ninety cars come headlights into your house. I mean, I, I feel bad for them.
And do they know that?
Oh, they know, they're, they're. The other thing is, is, so, let's just talk about a mass evacuation, how are we getting all of those people out of there in one room? Uh, it, it might be approved, but it wasn't approved very well or thought through a lot very well, and I'm not saying it's any of your fault, but what I wanna know is, mass evacuation, how are people leaving?
Where are they going?
Huh?
Where are they going?
Where's the whole city going, or the, the whole city?
Where are those, how are those people getting out of there?
Well, what's the evacuation, I guess.
Yeah, what's the situation?
Pick one.
Well, if there was a fire, if there was one of the buildings caught on fire, it was bad and it was empty day, the rest be kept in fire, so that, that might be one scenario.
A bad fire. How are they getting out? I just, I mean, a fire is just as, I mean, is the easiest.
I guess it would be no different than when you live in a cul-de-sac, I mean, I don't, or an apartment complex, just like the one that's on.
I've been in the cul-de-sac for ten years.
Yeah, just like the one that's on the other side of town, there's only one way in and one way out of that place, I, I don't, I'm not a, I don't know, I don't know the answer, I mean, I'm just, I'm assuming.
Yeah, we're coming up with, yeah, trying to get that weird.
We'll, we'll, we'll get these, we'll, we'll run it by, so all I can say is, we had a lot of questions and we did have the building inspector come here, so we get asked them these questions a few weeks ago. And he was the building inspector for multiple areas around here. And his comments were that these, that these, that everything we're looking at, he felt was pretty much in line with what the standards are. He didn't see anything, any concerns, so at that point, I was less concerned and now you guys have concerns that were brought up in front of him, that I don't know if it's another round of questions, I, I don't know the answer. But, um, there, there are, there are questions to it that, said, where, where do you put a second road if, if that is a requirement, I don't know. If it would have been required, I would assume it would have been caught by now.
I agree.
But Lance, we have, we have it all written down, all your concerns, all your, your concerns and questions that we can address.
I do have two more concerns.
In regards to the condos?
Yes, in regards to condos, one of them, I'm beating a dead horse on this, I just wanna make sure that they are putting a fence along our property line. Cause that road is going along our property line and they said they were, you said they confirmed that they were, I just wanna be positive.
I don't blame them, I mean, I've joined a couple of times.
So, I want that on record.
The only thing that I couldn't tell you was specific, specific, you know, what I'm talking about.
Specifically what type of fence they're putting up?
How, how far back they're gonna go.
Oh, far back.
You know, I'd like to see them go way back, but I'm, I'm absolutely as sure as I can be, I mean, I trust the guy, he hasn't lied to me yet on anything that we've done. So I would, I would expect that to be entitled.
Is this to keep you in or them out or?
Is to keep them off our property.
Don't worry, I'd be lost too much of a problem, I'll just sell my house to the next family that wants it.
I'd rather burn a wall fence, but you assure me that's gonna happen.
What's that?
Is it burnt or fence, or maybe both, you assure me that's gonna happen and we will, I'll, I'll keep it on the front.
Okay, I'm just, that's, that's kinda.
I mean, I, personally, I'd rather see a tree line burn than a fence.
Do you wanna maintenance it?
Yeah.
I know I was brought up before, Tammy said, well, how about a bush line, I said, are you gonna come and cut four hundred and fifty feet of bush line?
Because you're still cutting the grass there now.
What?
I got six hundred feet on my place and stuff like that and it's an enormous amount of water.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm trying to clear off that area of all the, the vines and stuff and.
I'll send my wife over, she likes it kinda.
We have two acres of trees under, thank you.
Okay, what's number two?
Number two is, is I, I know that, um, I know I talked to Steve about this before, they say it's gonna be okay, the water pressure. When you add all these houses, because we already have low water pressure. I mean, I can't sprinkle my lawn in the daytime or in the morning because the water pressure is so low.
Yeah.
Now you're gonna put sixty-four more houses in.
How old is your house?
What?
How old is your house?
Nineteen twenty-nine.
Okay, have you replaced your water line to the house?
Uh, that. I'm just saying this from experience, is that the water line to my house, I'm on the corner, Pratt and Nineteen. And it was probably two thousand and seven, I had to replace my water line because it started to leak. And it was one of those water pressure, uh, uh, water volume was like minimal, okay, because I ended up with a leak. I changed the water line and, uh, well, I tell you what, it went from being the size of my little finger to a three-quarter inch line. Unbelievable, the amount of difference. So it's one of those, if your house is that old, if the water line hasn't been replaced from the main to your house, that could be your issue if your house is that old. And it's an old galvanized line.
Well, I know the water.
Because the city doesn't lack water pressure.
I know the water coming into the house.
It's got great pressure, but yeah, I turn on my sprinkler.
Correct.
Well, that's volume.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
That's volume, that, that could be.
Yeah.
The main coming to the house.
Well, that's, but I'm just talking, that's what I'm talking about, is the volume.
Right, so that could be your individual issue, so with my house, since I've replaced that water line, I don't see any volume or pressure drop at all, depending on what time of day it is. I don't care what I'm doing with the water, you know, it used to be that, oh my God, don't flush it for a while, I'm in the shower because I'm gonna.
No, that's great, I get that there.
So, you know, that, that issue is gone away, that's, again, that's the, the, the old water line and I'd say that's your responsibility to go from the curb box to the house.
I just find it hard to believe, cause the plumber was out last year and I think he would have tried to sell us that.
But we have power coming into the house.
Yeah, that's a different.
I mean, before the meters pop, it's not galvanized before the meter, yeah, mine's copper too.
So that's been replaced, okay.
I lived in Armada and they went through and put new, they put that out a hundred years ago, they put in the new water, they changed it from the south side of town to the north side of town. And when they did that, they increased pressure, every single house that was built before nineteen seventy had to replace the water line in their house, cause it blew it apart. And I was one of those houses, my house has turned a century, you know, like your house was and it made a huge difference. I thought new water, we should be getting all kinds of pressure in here and it, and that was on me and I didn't know that was on me, I thought the city should fix that. And they're like, no, you gotta fix that.
And because you have copper coming in from the house, that may be from ten feet out, you know, but if you're, you know, sixty feet from the main. You've got, you could have a, an old galvanized line that's got a little pinhole in the middle that your water don't through.
Well, they would have had to pull a permit to do that, right? They don't have to pull a permit to replace the water main?
No, 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 I'm talking about your water line to your house.
I know what you're saying, but they'd have to pull a permit to dig that water line up and replace it, right?
They should, they should have, depending on what.
So would I be able to research the permit?
We should be, but depending on when, I don't know when Memphis started keeping track of that stuff, so I. And again, you're talking about main, I'm talking about the line from the main to the house.
I know, I know. I'm saying they'd have to pull a permit to replace that line.
They should.
Correct. And I get, you, you guys would have a problem, I start digging it up and just start messing with the water main.
Yes.
I'd have to pull permits to do mine, I told Bart what I was doing, he had to come out and shut the water off at the curb.
You should have to pull a permit.
I did in Armada, I had to come and inspect it to make sure that it was the right sized line.
I'm leaving mine like it is.
Yeah, but I don't know what Memphis rules are.
Wife doesn't water the lawn.
So.
The rain does the job.
Bart could answer that question for you very quickly.
And Bart could come out, um, cause I had a problem with mine, he said, he came out and I had water, my water pressure was pristine through the whole.
Well, no, I was just, I was just worried about the, the main size coming down Bell River and they, and I know they said they did a survey, I'm, I'm just saying, cause.
It's a bigger line, it's a bigger line, we actually, in these drawings, we actually have that portion for, uh, for, for the water in the sewage and the hydrants and everything, so.
They did do a calculation, same thing with sewer, that was a big ask, we all asked that question about, and we processed this much water and the answer was yes.
And I know that, um, I know that, uh, I think it's, is it Bart, who's the guy at the, uh, the G, G, were P P W guy?
Bart, Bart tells you that.
Bart, Bart, yeah, he was saying that, that they need to make sure someone's on site because if they deviate just a little bit, the sewage system is gonna be a problem. He said that at the council meeting, I remember.
Yes, you wanna talk with Bart on that.
Well, when they're installing the.
Yeah, when they're installing the sewer system, he says it's really, really close to not being able to do it.
But they did do the preliminary for the condo comment, so we're good there on that, that was all that was tested, the flow rate, hooking our lagoons and our sewage, so that's up there.
Right. Right.
Okay. We all good on the condos now?
Sure.
For, for now?
No, I don't like the condos. They're not good on.
Well, I figured that's why we're here.
That's why we're here, but I'm seeing any other additional issues that we need to bring up?
What are they, what are, do you have a picture of what they're supposed to look like, I'm just curious.
Yes, there are some elevations, there, there are planes.
I, I think he was like, give like a color picture.
He's all like.
No, it's the design of, you know, what's the thing supposed to look like and.
Conceptual design?
Yeah, yeah, something.
Not exactly what they're gonna look like.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, they gave conceptual designs of the houses on Bell River, they don't exactly match.
And they had the, and they had the, uh, the map backwards too, no one's noticed that, the map that they drew out back.
What's this here, this is the storm sewer profile? I think they did a lot of research on this. Sorry, too big. Uh, that, why are you doing that? There, good enough, sixty, here we go. You see that, all right, I'm looking at my screen.
Will you be a conceptual?
Yeah, they wanna see a picture.
Everyone see what the, the building itself's gonna look like?
Oh, I don't know if I have a building itself.
I don't think, these are all site plans.
These are all site plans, it's all in regards to water and your flow rates, yeah.
I know that when they, you know, seven months ago or whatever it was, when they came to us, that they did have conceptual drawings of what the condominium.
Yeah, I don't have those.
What are they looking at, like a four-unit townhouse design?
I think it's a three, I think it's a center, it's, I think it's the center and then you got the two ends.
Two ends?
Yeah, a couple smaller ones.
Yeah. Couple smaller ones on the.
Some bigger, some smaller.
Somewhere, somewhere three, eighteen hundred square feet?
I thought they were all four and five.
I thought they were all four and five.
Four and five.
Four and five.
Okay, four and five.
Fourplex, two, or fourplex and a twonplex?
Fourplex and fiveplex.
Yeah, I think some of them have, if I.
But are they stacked or are they, everyone has their own first floor and second floor?
Yeah.
Okay, no basements or?
I don't think they're going.
Basements.
They're garages, disgust, but they.
They're gonna have garages. I did hear they're gonna have.
Yeah, they're gonna have garages. I was surprised how big they were myself. Eighteen hundred square feet is a pretty decent size.
Condo, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's twice as big.
Kind of like this. I think that they have the two-in units. But this is, this is Richmond's, so it's the only, I had a picture of it. Sorry, I didn't have anything more on that, sorry. I was, I was just curious. Okay, so we're good there. Take a hand, though. Moving on, we got the review of our master plan.
We got a closing meeting.
Yeah.
I'll give a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Cool, all right, well, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. We appreciate it.
Yeah, very, you know, a lot of key points.
Yeah, we'll, we'll watch through the appropriate people and give the council a copy of the questions also.
Thanks, um, yeah.
Hey Steve, before I forget, I talked to the guys that build out over there. I always see a backhoe over there. If they were to take that backhoe and just clean up ten feet off the road in front of each house, the guys could park in them off the road. I think that'd be pretty simple. I haven't looked at them in a while. If you take that bucket, you run it backwards over that shit and you're flat and you can park your car on it. You can park all their trucks off the road.
Who would you ask to do that?
Just, the, the guy that, that's building the houses on Bell River. What's his name?
Oh, Mark.
Mark.
You just want Mark to make a spot on the property instead of in the road.
Take the backhoe, you run it backwards, you put the bucket down, I've run it back up before. And just clean up a spot so they can park. They'll all be off the road because what I'd like to do is see, um, someone from the fire department go down there and see if they can't get a truck down the road, and if they can't, then there's big trouble. If they're off the side of the road, take the backhoe, it's sitting there all the time. Wouldn't take those guys more than a couple hours to clean up both sides of the road.
And then make it, open it up too.
And they could park on the lot. That's it. They're off the, off the pavement, you got a full open pavement, everybody's happy.
That's right, and then if something happens, like you get a truck or an ambulance.
That'd be sensible.
Take a three minutes. Anybody else want to take a quick break and then we'll move on? We're all good.
Yeah, that's enough action for.
Did you say there is water over here somewhere?
We gonna take a recess?
Yeah, for a bit. I think so, three minutes, yeah.
Can somebody make a motion?
Uh, make a motion for a five-minute recess? Sport.
Sport, second.
Okay. Where's water at? Anybody know?
It's in the bathroom.
Is it in, oh, he's in there. Right next to the toilet.
Somebody, you guys gonna load it or not?
Right next to the. Hey, those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Great, we got the air phone. Check here, we gotta move on. We got a couple more things we gotta cover, unfinished business, we got the review of the master plan.
I'll, I'll make a motion, then we go back into session.
All, all approved, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on, reviewing the master plan, Mr. Weaver has section eight, implementation presentation.
Before we move on, I would, I would like a clear path forward on this. Gen, genuinely, I don't know. I, I don't know why we haven't sat down with the lawyer and just asked them point blank what, what we need to do here. But we, we can't approve a plan and tell them they're good to proceed if it doesn't adhere to our ordinances. And if we want to change our ordinances, there, it's a lengthy process in which you, you have to have a, a public, a public hearing. I, I printed off the section of the, uh, uh, Michigan compiled legislation that states that.
Well, so the thing is, is so we have the communication from Larry. Okay?
Which communication?
The one that you were handed at the beginning of this meeting.
Culprit development recommendations.
All right, at a special meeting on Wednesday, April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, the Memphis Planning Commission made recommendations to the Memphis City Council for changes to title, land usage, book thirty-one. Okay, so we have all the different sections. From fifty-one down thirty-six, fifty-five, and these are all recommendations that you made.
Yes.
Okay? So these, uh, I have written all the ordinance to comply with the Memphis Planning Commission request. This was discussed at the council meeting on the twenty-fourth. We took no action deferring to do until after your, uh, public hearing on the twenty-fourth. So none of this was addressed. The meaning of this public hearing was to address these changes, apparently. And we didn't address any of this during this public hearing.
Well, we didn't even provide notice that that was the, what the public hearing was about. And that, that was my, that was.
Well, I don't, yes, we did.
We were having a meeting about the.
You didn't, you didn't notify people, nobody knew, came here knowing that we were changing our, changing our, considering changes.
That was not the purpose of this meeting. I, I read the last correspondence from the lawyer, which Larry gave you when you quoted about, do we need another meeting because it seems to be a point of discussion? I read that, and he said, maybe you could, maybe you can't. So on the one hand, on the other hand, and we decided, just talking, uh, me talking to Larry, I said, you know, I, I, why not just have another one? Just to be safe, to make sure that we have covered the bases legally, that we've had all the public meetings. And I don't have it all in my. I'm, I'm not saying. On all these various meets that we had, but, and I've gone through it a couple times, not too long ago, there's a ton of. And I don't know what it called, um, was this a public meeting? Was this to address this particular point, that point? I think that we've gone through it. So that, to, to my understanding, this should have been addressed at tonight's meeting.
But it shouldn't.
Public hearing.
It should have been addressed at tonight's.
It really wasn't part of, that, that call for that meeting went out before that was ever.
Printed.
Larry just wrote those off from the last, from the last meeting on June or May eighth, I think, was the call's meeting.
Here, here's an excerpt from the, the Michigan zoning enabling, and the enabling act. Recommendations of zoning commission, submission to legislative body, public hearing, notice and examination of proposed text and map. Before submitting a recommendation for a proposed zoning ordinance to the legislative body, the zoning commission shall hold at least one public hearing. Notice of the time and place of the public hearing shall be given in the same manner as required under section one oh three point one for the initial adoption of a zoning ordinance or section two oh two for any subsequent zoning text or map amendments. So we never noticed, we never notified the public that we were considering amending our, our zoning laws.
I don't see the word amending in this. Proposed zoning ordinance. Kind of like, was there any fresh new ordinance? I don't see anything about water, because we've done, we have amended.
Yeah, we've amended other ones without public hearing.
And I, I.
Yeah, we have, so I don't know if that's even.
I don't, I think we've done it, we've done it wrong this entire time is what I'm saying. I, I believe we are required to have a public, a public hearing for all zoning, zoning recommendations. I mean, if you look at, I, I asked.
Well, and Ken, this has not been, this, this has not been acted on. Larry did a deference for a public meeting to, meeting today. So I think the next place to address it is at the next city council meeting. We're not gonna get too bottom over here, we, we haven't yet. It's in their hands, nothing's happened yet. Take it up at the next city council meeting.
I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with that. We can, we can talk about that there.
But the council's the one that can make decisions on full-blown, whatever they want to do.
Right.
Hire a Supreme Court attorney, I don't care what you want to do, or if they, they want to, uh, accept the judge's modified thing.
Like I said, about three months ago, I'm exhausted.
Yeah, it's gotta go to the next level.
We did, we made a recommendation. We made these recommendations.
He's doing it over and over. It's gotta go to the next level.
I mean, I know we feel like we're doing it over and over, but I, I just feel like it's been improperly done.
We made our recommendations, Ken. Let, let the council sort it out and let's make our case at that level. We are not going to come to a resolution to that here, and we're wasting time at this point.
Okay, we, we want to talk about this with council, that's fine, but we still have to figure out, it's been ninety days now since the sub, submission of their, uh, conceptual plan. At day sixty, we, around approximately sixty days in, we were supposed to give them, uh, give them, you know, approval, denial.
See, I don't, we're getting the conceptual plan out of this. I mean, that was a finished engineering print that we just accepted. Obviously, conceptual plan came before that.
Well, that was, that was.
Cities engineers have looked over the. Yeah, that's not a conceptual plan. We were here getting old engineers together and making sure the grades were right, all that kind of stuff.
I mean, I, I, I feel like planning was circumvented a little there and I.
You're entitled to that, but I'm just trying to get down to the reality of what can we do about it here right now?
I'm saying, right.
It's already set up to be argued at the council.
I, I'm saying at this point, we're, we owe the building, we owe the builders something. And I, I don't know that we're prepared.
I thought we already gave the builders something.
We gave them something for their first, it's a three-step process. And I know, I know that's a little redundant and confusing, but that's what our code is. We outlined clearly that we're gonna have these three phases. In, in January, when we made the motion, we said, we accept your, um, conceptual, we accept your conceptual drawings and at this time have no further questions. Please, please proceed with submission of your drawings and adhere to our ordinances, and we literally gave them a copy of our ordinances. And then they submitted to us another drawing, which is not in compliance with those ordinances.
And at that point, we, we came up with these recommendations. Even though you opposed the majority rule, we were gonna recommend these to the city council. We did that a month ago. City council didn't meet on it yet. In the meantime, we had another public hearing to discuss this again, just to make sure everything was out in the open. And we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is. So to me, I'm kind of with Steve on this, unless I'm missing something, this goes back to city council. They either approve these or deny these. And if they approve these, then we go back and approve, if you, if I'm hearing you right, we have, then have to approve the conceptual designs, which I thought we already did, but if we gotta do that again, it's a three-part process, then we would, we would approve those based upon them changing the ordinance, then the new designs will be in compliance to these ordinance that we've adjusted.
Correct.
But we made recommendations to the council, the council then, if they adopt these, then there, there is no more discussion.
Right, it's done.
Am I understanding that right?
For the most part.
And then at the city council meeting, if the public wants to join that meeting and say they disagree with these, that would be their time to speak.
We, as the planning commission, should be holding a public hearing for these.
We already did.
We, we did it though. I, we, we held a public hearing, but it was not in regards to that, and I know that's.
I thought that was the whole reason for tonight's meeting.
It, it definitely was supposed to be.
So you want, your suggestion is that in order to do it right, we have to have another meeting to talk about the actual specifics.
One through six on Larry's communication.
Would be, yes.
And, and depending, and again, we'll have this city, we'll have, if, if we go that route, and we have the same turnout as today, and again, I don't know how this works, so I'm asking, I'm not telling. But if we have six residents out of eight hundred oppose, does that mean we still move forward? Or does that mean we're gonna let the minority vote?
You take it on a recommendation and let city council make their call.
Okay, I, I don't know the process.
Yeah, it's the same process.
Okay.
Except you throw in another meeting in there and.
So, so we would let, we would invite the public again. Tell them we're gonna specifically talk about these changes that we're recommending. We'll let the people say their piece, that may or may not change our recommendations, and then it goes back to city council, and then they'll decide what to do?
Yes.
Can I ask you a couple things? In this thing you just handed out, the Michigan thing here, I didn't see anything in here, maybe I didn't read it correctly, that states that you have to be specific in what you're covering. I'll exaggerate here, you know, okay, we're having a public meeting because so-and-so wants a pink garage door. Okay, is that all gonna happen at the meeting? Is that what has to happen at the meeting? But I don't see anything in here that says you have to be specific about the things you gotta discuss, and has a general topic. And something else, if, instead of having another public meeting at the planning commission, and this I don't know, can you just have an open meeting at city council with the same exact agenda, same exact topic, sent out to the same exact people, and just get it done once at the city council meeting? Hey, we're open, here it is, dah 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 dah, are we done? And at that same public meeting, is there any legal requirement for planning commission to have a meeting as opposed to the pub, the city council?
As long as, I would say, bring the app to the next city council meeting, we will let the whole council decide.
As long as.
No, I'm not gonna sit here and speak for the city council.
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering.
But no, I understand, I understand your points, Ken.
That's the case, maybe Donna can get on.
I think again, I went back to ten minutes ago, the case, you can make to the next city council meeting. They've not acted on any of this yet.
If, if.
They'll all, they can draw up that and directly be applauded from there.
If Donna can do a phone thing and check with people, hey, what do you think about this? And have the open meeting at the next meeting be done with.
We have taste meetings and being, I want to, some things like that too, we can.
What is the next meeting? You got a month, right?
First, first, well, first Tuesday, a month.
Did she have one yesterday, Tuesday?
Yeah.
Does that one Tuesday?
So we got almost a whole month.
This is actually a special meeting, our actual regular meeting is next Wednesday.
She has almost a whole month to put together, make a few phone calls, hey, can we do this?
This was a special.
And then send out the information.
We haven't mentioned anything about the specials.
Get it to everybody and have it at next council meeting.
That's what we're doing, condos.
Right, so the thing is, so this is a special meeting. Then we shouldn't be talking about anything. So everything else after what we just covered at the public hearing, uh, is well avoided, that has to go to a regular meeting.
Correct.
Unless our, is there sign orders and our chicken thing have to be handled now? Those, those are both things that we were trying to get.
That was the stuff that, the, the chicken thing and.
And the sign.
And the sign is what we were going, that was supposed to be, I was on the assumption that was for next week. I wasn't, you know, I totally forgot about this meeting, fifth clock for the condos, but then I saw the ordinance for the sign ordinance and the animal quote. That was something.
Well, if we make one me, I can still have one next week.
Well, I was interested, yeah.
Good.
I make a motion that this be heard.
I don't know that you can do that.
Can't do that.
Yeah.
Dang it.
Um, and in, in regards to your first point.
You tried.
The notices required under this section shall include the places and times at which the proposed text and any maps of the zoning ordinance may be examined. So we never told them where they could review the text of the zoning ordinance, and we never told them about the zoning ordinance. So there can't be a public hearing about it.
So what were they saying about this one?
It was just, we are having a site, or we're having a public hearing about the.
They had questions in regards to the water in the sewage and the streets.
Where they could look at any prints or anything?
Just the ones that I had on the screen.
They didn't have nothing.
It's just pop in and say, hey, what the hell do you think, man, that's just.
Say you come in to general complaint about, anything about it, yeah.
So now.
Yeah, normally a public hearing, you give people free minutes to talk, they get up, talk, say their piece, sit down, and then don't talk anymore. I don't know what's going on here tonight. It didn't seem like a public hearing.
It seemed like more of a.
Pretty raw.
Hope you guys wanna do it, whatever, we're gonna.
Yeah, always confetti in the air today.
Yeah, conversations.
All right, go back to the question, talking about, uh, just whether this is a special meeting. Um, the date was changed to Thursday instead of Wednesday. I don't know why that was, but.
That was to give enough notice, I think, to put the notice in the paper.
Okay, so the thing is, is.
We gotta have fifteen days.
Wednesday, the sixth, would have been a regular meeting, so this per se is a regular meeting that was.
No, our second, second, second Wednesday.
Second Wednesday is planning commission, yes.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's what I thought too, that's why I'm looking down here on, on.
So what do you guys?
On the agenda.
Well, on the agenda, our our next thing here is.
Reviewing the master plan with section eight implementation presentation and review chapter ninety-three animal ordinance and sign one fifty, the sign ordinance of one fifty. But that would be, but considering that this was a special meeting, those shouldn't be considered in this meeting.
Well, I mean.
Because we're gonna have a meeting next week and we're gonna address the same thing over, this meeting is specifically for the condo. The condo.
Well, you can have a, you can have a public hearing is part of the regular hearing, that's why we closed the public hearing. We're not in the public hearing anymore, there's nothing wrong with doing that.
All right.
And I don't wanna postpone anything, third postponement.
Me too. So am I, I wanna, I wanna get through this.
I mean, I'll try to be very quick with what I got here, but let's, you know, we gotta get this done.
Let's rock on then.
All right.
I have no problem with that.
May I make this?
Yes.
Implementation thing here on the table.
Yep, section eight implementation.
But I think it'll be pretty simple, this page is fifty-one. Through fifty-three in the master plan, you'll have to look at it after here, but I'm just gonna go briefly what I think, I think it's gonna be fairly easy. And I have some little help to put these charts together, but basically. It just saying what we're doing, uh whether the short term, color coded long term, or.
Can you stay on the other side?
I, yeah. There, you know, either short term, long term, or ongoing. So uh the first page says residential goals and objectives. Not a lot that I'm changing on these, we don't have to really jitter around much, I just. Common sense where we're at, some things that we've done later, we'll change it, like the first one, for instance, uphold and force community ordinances. Uh we had that short term, I feel that's ongoing now, because we've been doing that, we've created some new ordinances, we've got the residential spec thing. One example, another one here is. Uh establish residential design guidelines, uh that's short term, because we have been working on it right now, I thought that would change. Since we're looking at the the condo ordinances and all that kinda stuff. Rest of my didn't change on that page, you guys change it once you want. Uh give you some feedback next time around, but I'll be ready to go ahead and produce this after that. Uh I my uh under commercial goals and objectives, and this is a lot of. Maybe overkill when they put the plan together with, but it it looks good, I don't wanna, I don't wanna X it out, because it's got. Four categories they may fall under, live, earn, play, or earn, so each one of these categories gets shoved in a box there. Uh see, we got review and update central business district zoning order, uh zoning ordinance. Uh I put that on short term because that's part of what we're still hadn't done with the master plan. Pinning down the exact boundaries of the central bus- business district. Um so that's ongoing, or short term rather, we gotta get that done before his plan's done. The other one on this page, I had review and update industrial zoning district. And development review procedures, and I put short term on that because we have. A couple of pieces of land that we wanna put into the industrial zoning. And a couple, uh one over here by Mill Street, across from um. Donato's, that he's kinda using already on the riverside, and there's a parcel up on the north end of town. So I put that on short term, again, that, we'll get to that when we get to that, it's still ongoing, but I can get, I can get this part done if we're all in agreement on it. Then under transportation. Uh goals and objectives, we had analyze street on and off parking areas, that's short term, we're doing that, we're looking at instead of. Uh long term, because we're looking at repaving of, meant the water tower lot, parking issues, we've been talking about. Uh with the new construction and Pratt Road, Boon Gottle and everything. Baseball games, facilitate open discussions with utility service providers. And that was short term, I put ongoing. And we do wanna, at some point, it's not correct prior now, but I would like to talk to different utility providers and. What, what, how much expansion capacity we have, if we put another condo development on the end of town. Just, you know, general and get to know a few people like that, for just our main.
I've been very close with the gas company and the.
That's what we wanna invite, you know, people that we have, we invite John to.
Yeah, okay.
Um.
One year.
Under natural features and environment goals, ongoing, um. Establish relationship with environmental agencies, so forth, so on, I've done that with Blue Water Watershed and the Clinton River Watershed, exploring the kayak thing. And DNR and funding and all that kinda stuff. So I moved that to a short term goal, you know, I'll pick up when the master plan's gone, I'm not going any further than that until we have the master plan complete, when I talk to somebody after here's our master plan. We're in this part of it, that's what we wanna do, so I would change that to short term. Uh increase number of public access points, get it short term, we're looking. Two or three different areas we might be able to get kayak land, some of it involves private property, but. Right now, we got the park, we'd like to start with one there, if we could do that, you know, we'll see what everybody thinks about it. Last page, I didn't change anything, then there's, on the very last page, there's a few things that it says additional planning documents. No reason to have to keep those in there, just like bullet points, things we can work on. And the bottom here, there's a zoning map changes, uh these are recommendations. There's about, I won't go through them all, there's like six or seven of them, that's also in the master plan on page forty-eight, it never got implemented properly, the, they were recommendations. Some of it has to do with zoning, some of it's future maps, some of it's changing zoning, extending zoning diff-. We're gonna go off all, that that's, whatever, page forty-eight or something, not quite there. But we will address those after. We're ready to move on as soon as we are. So I don't know if we even wanna include this part in here, if we take care of them off that other page, unless there are things here that we're, we wanna include. That we wanna address in future master plan, this would be the part where we put anything out, what what that ends up looking like, I don't know, we have to talk about when we get there. Uh and and I'd like you to read it over and see what you think, but there are all, there's something corresponding out, there's these six or eight points on that old master plan that we have from twenty-fourteen. It has the exact same verbiage, you know, we changed the industrial thing out, crossed the street over there from uh Donato's, and a few other things like that. Um I can get in more detail when we get to that point, show you on the maps, I'd rather point these out exactly, because we still, you know, one of the next steps is. That zoning map, we gotta put together, so it's up to date. The one we're gonna publish with the master plan, so all that stuff has to take place right before we do that, so we know exactly where we want each one of these. So people can look at it and look into approved plans, so that's, that's what I had.
So do we just take the the draft of the of the zoning map that we have and re- move the lines around?
Well, there's gonna be a few changes, just for the recommendations that were proposed last time, we're never done. Do you wanna keep them same or not, yeah, I got a couple ideas, mostly yes. You know, just jittering them around, particularly the industrial thing, the north end of town, I, I, you know, I I'm I'm uh leaning towards those last three or four lots, just. Letting it be, C one, commercial zoning, that leaves it open for um. The high-end residential's. And or condominium complex, if the zoning was changed, it could be a future use. Um. And it's right on that corridor, so it makes sense to me, we were talking about, or the prior plan was talking about, also designated added industrial. But that's a little, you know, deeper discussion we should have, see how people feel about that. And then adding right, the T-shirt factory, or not stone building, it's like a T-shirt factory, I guess. There's another strip land, the very northern part, that's like R one now, that uh suggesting, according to R one, should be industrial, which makes sense. You could fit a nice industrial complexes on the end of town, it's deep, you know, they could have facility to do whatever they want, so that's. That's kinda the high point for everything for that, but I'll go ahead and start working that up and I'll be able to move things around, but if anybody sees anything out there. Let's talk about next, you know, either next meeting, next month, whatever, at the latest, we've been having a meeting Wednesday, I guess.
Next Wednesday should be our regular, our regular.
All right, well, if we have, that's, I don't wanna put anybody under the gun for next week to go all through this, but. At least.
It would be nice if we did.
It would.
Do we have a copy of that or are you gonna?
It it's in the master plan.
Okay, good, I mean, I could go back to the last pages of planning.
Just, just look, look at it and see yourself, I ain't worried about what I changed, you know, we'll just compare and also we come back. We should be able to just go right down the list and should be that, that much, you know, to do. But just so they're up to date, and then I can start trying to, I gotta personally help me do this, you know, put it in a document form. And that'll be a PDF file, and I'll be ready to, you know, go with the bulk of.
Cool.
All the other tests we've done, and then we start looking at pictures and zoning maps and the index. Those, just the last things we have to do for it, I reckon, that's all I had on on that, Mr. Chairman.
All right, 'cause I saw this P D, trying to create a PDF.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, chapter ninety-three animals of the code, or uh animal code. Who'd we have, um?
Whatever. Yeah, and.
I'll point that finger.
No, actually, you sent it to me.
Also, yeah, we had Ken.
I was an article, you sent it to me, I have it, I have it.
Oh, yeah. The meeting was canceled that we had set up.
Do you wanna reschedule that for discussion next Wednesday? Regards to the.
At the regular meeting?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, we could, I, I checked with Armada and I went, I looked at Richmond's code and I looked at Emmett and. No one actually mentions chickens on a small lot in town. I think Emmett, if I'm not mistaken, had, you know, anything, two acres and up, you can have this many, and then he went to five and. Um. I believe it was Armada that had no provision for him at all.
And I think Richmond, you have to get a recommendation.
Yeah, you gotta get a permit from the town, and Armada only mentioned hoved animals. No mention of fowl. So. That's what they got around there, so I didn't find anything, I was gonna go a little bit bigger and see if I could find something, you know, there's gotta be a balance kinda out here, you know.
I mean.
Yeah.
My, just my opinion?
Yes.
You start allowing people to have fowl, it'll be fowl, it'll be, it'll, it's one of those where, you know, where do you draw the line, who can have them, who can't have them? Can you only have a rooster, oh, well, I don't know who's a rooster, oh, you know what, where do you keep your feet at, because now we got a pile of rats in my yard because the neighbor has chickens.
See, I don't know the downside.
I think, truthfully, I think it's a really, really bad idea.
Okay, I don't know the downside, I don't know the upside, that's just what I found.
The upside is free eggs, it only costs you so much for the feed and raising the chickens. And this, this goes from personal experience, too, because when I moved here, there was a road rooster that supposedly escaped a chicken truck. He used to live in somebody's garage at night and would come over and sit on my neighbor's stoop outside of my bedroom window and crow at four o'clock in the morning.
At least you got him on time to work.
Yeah, and then to top it, my wife is out there putting her flowers in her flower bed, and the rooster's right behind her digging them out so he can get to the grubs and the worms. And this was one rooster.
At four o'clock in the morning?
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's like as soon as it starts to peak daylight, in the summertime, oh, yeah.
Someone around here has one, 'cause I heard one.
They're racing right outside of town, they're just right outside of town, there's a road rooster.
May or may not be in town.
Yeah, may or may not.
Anyways, look, okay, so that's that, I just wanna, I just put my two cents in there.
Well, I'd like to add to what he said, when you're looking at stuff, I do, I think size of the property is a big deal.
It is basically a big.
If you got four acres and you wanna have three chickens, I mean, who's to tell you you can't, right? I mean, that's what I'm saying.
But the thing is, is in this city, it's like, you can, but you can't.
Well, I'm just saying, I I don't, I like the permit idea, so you know who has.
They have to have a permit, just so we know who has, we have to register.
Yeah.
Plus lot size, too, lot size should make a difference.
I I think.
You can only put a certain big house on a lot, so you, you're restricted by a lot.
And they have to be, I think you met, wasn't it, you didn't mention they have to be away from the fence line and and something like that.
Yeah, probably.
That's what.
I know you're opposed, I'm just saying, if it were to move forward.
You're just, you're opening a big can of worms.
I'm gonna get current, the biggest rooster I can find.
So, hey, so nothing happened with that, right?
No, we're gonna.
No, nothing happened, we're gonna move it to next Tuesday, table it to next Tuesday, to the regular meeting, not regular.
And I think we, we do have the sign, we have a recommendation for the.
We have, yeah, for the sign ordinance. I'm going to bring it up.
If we wanna adopt it or if we wanna review it, look at it, then we can vote on it next week, whatever, I don't.
Well, actually, you know what, uh this is something, if you can turn around and uh look at it, if you guys approve it, um to forward it to city council ASAP. And city council will push forward, I get an approval, and we can do a uh a local vote or a a daily vote.
Guys, so we can get it moving.
I agree with that.
So we can get it for Tammy ASAP.
Yeah, okay, so this is what, um, I pulled up Marine City, this is the provision that. Uh Philip's sign in the Nautical District of Marine City uh conforms to for their sign. This is all sign types allowed and regulated in section one twenty dot two twenty, which I have a copy of, if you want to review it, I can email it to you, I do have this. Uh it should be allowed within the Nautical Mile District, projecting signs should be, also be permitted within the Nautical Mile overlay districts for all structures other than single-family detached dwellings. Subject to the following requirements. A, projecting signs that shall not exceed more than four feet from the wall of the building, and should not be closer than three feet from the back of the curb line. Minimum height, no portion of any sign would extend over the public, our W shall be less than eight feet from the surface below. So that's the bottom of the sign.
Yeah.
And then all signs shall safely be and securely attached to structural members of the building by means of metal anchors, bolts, or expansion screws. In no case shall any projecting sign be secured with wire, strips of wood, or nails. And it says expensive attachment shall be stated on the permit application, so they do require a permit. In the Nautical District, if you want a copy of the sign ordinance, I do have it in Dropbox. I think everybody has a, has logged in for Dropbox. And I have it in there, one is, one is Marine City.
So we have to, we have to change the verbiage, though.
Yeah, change the verbiage.
Yes.
Uh and here is the Marine City signs, it is actually, I went to the general provisions for section one sixty, and it is under general provisions, there are twenty-six pages on this ordinance. So cutting it down, actually going to the Marine City signs, one sixty dot one eighty-two is your permitted special use of signage. And if you continued, if I continue down. Um it does involve, uh as we were discussing before, one, here's two twenty of signs.
Hold on.
Where do you want me to go, sir?
It says something about.
Just go back, just go back a little bit. So you were looking at special use signs?
This is actually here, one sixty dot two two zero signs.
Okay, yeah.
This is the actual city ordinance for signs, the one that, what that Philip sent me was in reference to, which is one sixty dot one eighty-two. In regards to special signs in the Nautical Mile.
Well, they sent you the whole thing, right?
What's that?
She sent you the whole thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is, this is one sixty dot two two zero.
The other one where you have the changes, what was that, section eight?
Special use.
Special use, the one that she sent me was this one here.
Section.
And that is one sixty dot one eighty-two permitted special usage signage. This covers. Uh ground signs that we were, that uh we were talking before the meeting. Uh but this is specifically in regards to signs. It's section one sixty dot two two zero of the Marine City sign ordinance. So like I said, this one's nine pages, it's kind of like the roundabout, it actually gives you the description of the signs, what each one means, awning sign, balloon sign, banner sign. Ground, marquee, mural, every, you know, for what they have in Marine City, and this is just a general provisions. Which is twenty-six pages.
What do we have for signs now as far as?
Cause there can't have any.
It's, it's basically, it's so big.
Pretty much, it it, and the thing is, is it projects over the sidewalk, so.
Right, so that's.
Under ours, it would be illegal, the attorney's office sign that's been there for thirty years is illegal.
Illegal, right.
So we only got like a paragraph?
Yeah, it's like a paragraph, that's funny.
So we can add in, bring a little bit of this, we don't need twenty pages.
So, right. So this stuff must, well, we can either go through the, we can go through all twenty-six pages and go from there, or cutting it down, like I said, I did a simplified.
Let me talk for three minutes before we do that.
What's that?
Can I talk for a couple minutes before we go through all twenty-six?
No, no, we're not going to it tonight, no, absolutely, this is for.
No, no, we just wanna take this section.
I was just showing you that this is what John and I have been working on.
Right.
And this is where they, um, the Philip sign says Marine City is a good one, because of their Nautical Mile District, which is a historic district, we somewhat have, also.
So.
Go ahead.
Let me task you with. Put this together.
Right.
To fit into our ordinance, other words, where we're at, put in another subsection or whatever we need to do to add this. And if you can get this into language.
Right.
And get it sent out, get it sent to Donna or whatever, and she can forward it to the rest of us, so we can look at the language.
Then we can get it first to the council and get it out.
And then, and and, you know, so we can get it out by midweek next week or whatever.
Works for me.
Yeah, I'd say, cause we're basically just gonna replace Nautical Mile with.
Memphis.
Memphis.
Yeah.
No, you don't, you don't need all this, no, we don't.
No, I wouldn't.
No, you, you pretty much need that highlighted section.
Yeah, but even that highlighted section says Nautical Mile, that's what I'm saying.
Well, I don't.
I understand. All we wanna do is take that highlighted section.
But that's for special use signs. This is, this is not, I don't, in my opinion, I haven't read the whole thing, so I don't know, but.
I read quite a bit of it. That's the thing is, is this, I don't.
We just want signs.
We just wanna put it in the signage, not special use signage.
Right, well, we could take, we could take.
So you can take that section.
We could take this section here.
And give it, you know, one, what is it, uh?
Here, one, one sixty dot one eighty.
Well, no, I'm taking it our, wherever section it is.
This is the highlighted section right here.
And give it a one A. And then put this highlighted piece in there without saying Nautical Mile.
Yeah, that, that's it, that's what we, that's all I wanna do, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Make it. We don't wanna put it under special use or anything like that, we just wanna tack it onto the bottom of our sign ordinance, does that sound right?
I think you wanna replace your sign ordinance.
What's that?
I think you wanna replace this current sign ordinance. I mean, it's only like two paragraphs.
Right.
Right.[1791.22] Right.
I, I don't remember what it says, but I know, I know what I looked at, I was like, this is ridiculous.
Right, so...
Thirty years ago.
I can email this to everybody, the, the, the nine pages? I can email it to you for everybody to look it over and see what you think?
No, I would just copy and paste that.
You just think...
That's what I, that's what I would do, but, you know...
But I agree with you.
That's why we're here, I mean, that's what we were talking about, this is the area...
I'm not in the planning commission, so I'm just saying that, you know, this...
I don't remember.
No. Just copy and paste it, and after here, we'll go hang that sign for ten minutes.
Do we have a motion?
I wanna speak.
You gotta do it.
For me here.
Okay, go ahead.
We'll get to you in a minute.
Alright.
Yes.
The whole motivation for this is to get Tan to sign up, right?
Right, right.
No, no.
But not really, it's to, it's to allow the other signs...
It is a motivator for us to examine this.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, well...
And then it'll bring, and then it'll bring the one sign that we have hanging like this in the...
Yeah.
Yeah, correct.
Alright, and it should've been on our council meeting this last, yesterday, or Tuesday, or whenever it was. Um, it is very short, and that section, that's one fifty point zero zero six B, that's, that's an R code. Starts out like this. "No sign except those established and maintained by the city, county, state, federal governments..." Now, I inserted some language after that, but after it says governments, uh, "shall be located in, projected into, or overhang the public right of way or dedicated easement." So we're trusting that the city, county, state, and federal signs are gonna follow that. There's a set of parameters for them, correct?
Right.
So, right after, "no sign except those established and maintained by the city, county, state, or federal governments," come "those owned by local businesses whose design and construction specifications have been reviewed by the planning commission and approved by the city council" "shall be located and projected into..."
So that was your proposed change?
Yeah.
This one's very good.
Yeah.
I like that.
That's even better than what we...
Why didn't you speak up earlier?
Well, I don't wanna give it its turn, I don't wanna be rude.
No, it's fine.
Um, but I do think we, we could craft more into it.
Well, I think crafting what you have there...
I, I gave all copies of it, I already gave Donna a copy, just in case. And then I asked Donna in the, the opening, before I put the language there, that, you know, I don't know if we can do it by email, I'm not, I'm not taking that, but I said we could schedule a, a meeting as soon as possible, just to help her do this, I mean, she's been waiting for months and months, she's got a lot of money tied up in this. I'm not trying to give her special treatment, I would do it for any business owner that made an investment, they're trying to grow the business, trying to grow the economy down. And if we can do that, either through having an email, otherwise, she's gotta wait another full month for us to get back there, meanwhile, we can, if we get, if we get the language...
I like his language, and then just putting, just giving the, uh, means of, you know, securing it to the building, and not sticking wires on it.
Right.
I think putting it in there is for the safety reasons.
So I think we put all those together, and we get it to Donna, she can email it out to all the council members, and ask...
You wanna add on to this, who's gonna do that?
Let me see that.
No, I'm not gonna.
No, I'm saying, he's got it here, so...
You want, we gotta add on? I mean, I don't have any objection to that, but I mean, gonna go through their... Or we're just gonna...
Let me see, "no sign except those established and maintained by the city council, federal governments, those owned by..." "signing construction specifications have been reviewed." No, because right there, it says right there, "what do you think this sign, would you like it, it's mounted great, it's not looking like you got stickers on the back and gummy tape, you know?" I'm good with this. In my eyes.
Well, I'd make a mo, a motion that we recommend to City Council.
I second that motion.
To, to amend one fifty point zero zero six of the city code of ordinances.
To read as law.
To read. And Tan gave you a copy of it, so you... That whole section, you could just raise a copy. "No sign except those established, so forth and so on, adding business owners after they have been reviewed by the planning..."
Right, and come and see here's the sign.
So we could ask questions, even though we don't have a big body of language in there right now, and we could, we could detail that out a little bit.
We can detail that out as we go.
Because we still have unfinished business with right-of-way, with banner signs.
Yep.
Yes.
That has been neglected and still, but we're, that's coming up, or we're part of this discussion today?
So, what on your motion, you don't want your...
I'm making a motion for amending section one fifty point zero zero six to the, to the following language.
Can I ask a question before the vote?
Sure.
Do we need to remove any language that's in there now, or is this completely replaced?
Nope, all I'm doing is putting a comment, adding on, on after state, federal, city.
So it's gonna cover, we could say, do your thing, and...
Yeah.
And we expect them to follow the same standards. Imply that the state, or the federal, or the county, or the city would, would be following.
Okay.
Isn't there something in the current one about lighting from your sign shining on adjacent residential property, or something like that?
Yeah, there is, there's specs on, you gotta be shaming neighbors, and...
That's good, I think what you want, that's area lighting to...
I'm too involved, something like that.
It's about signs, it's about signs.
Alright, so we have a motion?
It's in the sign order for it.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor for adopting the change?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Aye.
Alright, motion carried.
Actually, that should be stated that they recommend the city council for...
Recommend the city council, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Moving on.
Comments?
Comments from the committee board.
Well, and what, what about these banner signs, are we not taking action on that, are we going any further with that?
I'm sorry?
Are we not taking any action on these banner signs? And/or, uh, the right-of-way questions, I emailed a couple of you.
You did, so, so I, I didn't know if, you sent that, I did read that, about that technically no signs are allowed in the right-of-way.
Inspection, yeah, I got that from the right-of-way agency.
You're not supposed to have any of those signs, which is kinda what Barb, this is Barb's favorite topic, so...
Yeah, she's not here right now.
She's not here, but that, the signs that are from the sidewalk to the curb are technically not supposed to be there.
So does that give a certain footage off of the road, because you have areas where you have sidewalk, you don't have sidewalk, they have signs planted next to the road, they have them planted, you know, six feet from the road, they have them four feet from the road, you know, where do you wanna go?
And this was a county, wasn't it a county ordinance, or is it a state ordinance? I, I can't remember where it came from.
There were a couple of questions, number one, were, were the banner ones okay because of right-of-way?
Those are the flags, the temporary?
The temporary signs.
Yeah.
The temporary signs.
The flag.
Flag, flag.
And the other was the, the obstruction in the, we're, we're talking about the state road.
Yes.
And nineteen and Boardman, where that crosses, and it says twenty-five feet, like, from, uh, the road, making a triangle, you can't have anything in there, so I don't even know if those banner signs even violate that, to tell you the truth, I think they're further than twenty-five feet away from the, from the...
From the church, yeah.
So that might not be it, but that's where, you know, the people that are working on this, I don't know who it was, but either pursue it, or say we're not gonna take any action on it, 'cause you're, I just wanted to have it resolved, one way or another.
I'll make a motion to have no action.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Who seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
Hopefully, everybody will see the new ordinance for the hanging signs, and then everybody will start to adopt that. Because I think that'd be, I think they'd be good for the dispensaries too, to have it side of their building instead, out on the ground.
You see it a lot better.
Yeah, you see it a lot better, absolutely.
I mean, if you're driving a car, it's easier to look up there than, you know, look at the side.
I think they'll be happy with it.
I, I think that's a great idea, and...
Yeah.
I have no comments.
You have no comments? Mayor never had any comments, except for...
No, really.
Except for, um, Tan, Tan, Tan...
Is it Tan's who you're hearing?
Okay, any other comments, anybody?
I'll get those comments to, uh, I'm sorry, I mean, no, no, no.
No, I'm good, no comments from me.
I'll get those comments and questions that I got texted to Mark tonight.
Okay.
And I'll make a list of them, and I'll include it, uh, in, in the pack, for the city council.
Okay.
And we'll, we'll go from there, and see how they wanna add some of those issues. It's a good idea, I like the parking idea, if we can, you know, just...
Yeah, we're gonna, just back off, clean it up.
Because it is a cluster bomb down there, you know, I'm going up and down the road every day, and I can really sympathize with people being frustrated with that, it's...
Till a fire truck comes down and pushes it along the way.
Well, that was my thing, half of it.
You know, it's a practical reality to get them built, I mean, I'm not complaining, but it's, it could be a little bit easier if we had a few things.
Been in construction for thirty years, Arizona, New York, and it's just, you, you pull up on the lot, granted, it's, it's a little different dirt, but you pull up, you wanna get close to the house, you know?
Yeah, that's just the construction, I wasn't...
Well, you don't wanna have to walk all the way...
When you're wiring a house, you don't wanna do it from a block away, you wanna pull right up there as close as you can to get your...
Clean up the dirt.
Mr. Dunbar, do you have any comments, sir?
I thought I had the stuff in Larry's pack.
Um...
Yeah, so it's now, they want to get out here.
I got some, no, I read it.
My, uh, my appointment is up in July, and I would like to ask that I not be reappointed. I'm sure that would be the easiest favor I ever asked for, um...
Stressful.
I, it's not that, I, if the speed limit's fifty-five, I set my speed, I set speed control fifty-four. Like, that, that's just who I am as a person, and I, I don't wanna say complicit, because I don't think any of it is malicious, or, or I don't think any of it's evil, I don't think any of it's malicious, but I have a desire to uphold every single letter of the law that I have learned. And I know, as a city, we have not always been as on top of things as we could have been, and I, I, I would have liked to have, I would have liked to have made more progress in pushing us forward in that. And I, I wish you all the best of luck in the future, I, I like all of you. I don't drink, but I'd get a beer with all of you.